On behalf of our chamber members. And so this luncheon today is a result of those folks who came around the table. They meet with us monthly at the Chamber. They look at a lot of things related to public policy from a local level, looking at things related to a state, federal level, as well as anything that we can do to have an impact on business community as a whole. So I would like to acknowledge the Government Affairs Council who helped to put this forum together. Today, that would be Jeff Blake, our Chair of Government Affairs. Steve Adams, Judy Connell, Patricia DeRoz, Michael Stahl, David Sullivan, Wendy Vila, Bill Tufts, and Dave Mitchell. Of course, some other guests that we have with us are our candidates for City Council, which you're going to hear from shortly. At this time, I do want to say thank you to all of our Chairman Circle members. Without that higher level of support, we really wouldn't have the ability to do some of the things we do. You can see on the screen our Platinum Level Chairman Circle. Just this month, or actually now that we're in the beginning of October, so ending September and going into the beginning of October, we actually welcomed three new Chairman Circle members. One was the Connell Group from Judy Connell. Thank you very much for your support. We actually just last week welcomed the Coyotes as a Chairman Circle sponsor, as well as most recent Friday, the Arizona Cardinals came on as a Platinum Level sponsor. So we're very thankful to their support and investment. In addition, we have our Gold Chairman Circle, APS, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and the Glendale Star. And then we have our Silver Chairman Circle Level sponsors, Arizona State, Daisy Companies, Midwestern University, and our Bronze, which you can see on the screen. There's a lot to mention, so I'll let you take a look at those. At this time, I do want to thank our presenting sponsors for today's event, and that would be SRP and the Connell Group. Thank you very much for your support as a presenting sponsor. Our supporting sponsors are ASU and WiMar. Thank you very much for your support today. And of course, we have several event partners, which are the Renaissance, the Glendale Star, Peverini's Custom Floral, as well as Ed and Betty Sharp from the Daily Planet, who are providing video services. At this time, I would like to invite Patricia DeRoz from SRP up to say a few words.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's great to be here. I'd like to first give a big thanks to Robert and the Glendale Chamber for putting this forum on. SRP is very proud to sponsor forums like this and appreciates the Glendale Chamber for offering programs that allow the community to gain more insight into those that will represent you over the next four years. And I wanted to also thank all of the candidates. I know it's been a grueling campaign season. It can get ugly, and we thank you very much for all of your current service, those of you who are on City Council, and those of you offering to serve the community representing the city of Glendale. And as a reminder, the election is just around the corner, I believe. Early ballots are going to drop this week, and then the election day is November 4th, so please, get out there and vote. Your vote does count. Thank you. I hope you enjoy the program.
Thank you, Patricia, and SRP for all your support. At this time, I would like to invite Judy Connell from the Connell Group up to say a few words as well.
On behalf of the Connell Group, I want to thank you all for coming today. This is our very first candidate forum, and we're really excited to have such good participation. I want to thank all the candidates, too. I know it's really tough, a hard season, but stay at it, keep walking, and keep doing your thing. I'm really happy and excited to be involved and be a part of the new changes happening at the Chamber. Ron, Robert has just done a fantastic job with new leadership, a new vision, new management, and it's just been amazing to work with him. And we hope that all of you, if you're not a member, we'd love to have your participation as well. Thanks very much today.
Thank you, Judy. You'll notice on your tables you have some floral centerpieces. Again, I mentioned they were provided by Peverini's Custom Floral, and those folks are with us today, so thank you very much. In addition, you also have some of their chocolates that are branded with their name, which came from Soretta, so we thank them for those. The centerpieces are able to be taken with you, so we'll let you decide that at your table, who gets to take that today. I also want to thank Bill, he too, from the Renaissance, for his help with today's program, the lunch you're having this afternoon, and all of his staff for their great work, as well as Steve Smart from the Audiovisual Company for providing that. So at this time, I have the honor of introducing today's panel of moderators, who will join me up front. First, we have Dave Mitchell, our current Chairman of the Board. He's owner of Ideal Insurance, serves on the Chamber of Government Affairs Council, and adjunct professor. Welcome, Dave. Our next panel moderator will be Michelle Ryder. Michelle is the President and CEO of Westmark, the Western Maricopa Coalition, which is a public-private partnership of 15 communities, business community and education sector west of Interstate 17, dedicated to promoting quality of life and enhancing economic development in the West Valley. Welcome, Michelle. And our last panel moderator to join us up here is Jeff Blake. Jeff is a Director for Intentional Achievements, a current Chamber Board Member, as well as the Chair of our Government Affairs. Welcome, Jeff. At this time, I will turn the program over to our moderators to take us through the forum. Thank you.
Would you please help me welcome, from the Choya District, Lauren Tomachoff. In addition, from the Choya District, Gary Geerdorf.
Please help me in welcoming, from the Beryl District, Bart Turner. And Randy Miller, from the Beryl District.
And please help me in welcoming, from the Ocatillo District, Councilmember Norma Alvarez. And Jamie Aldama.
As you can see, we've arranged this set this way, so each of you can remain seated as you go ahead and answer your questions. And at this time, we'd like to go ahead and give each of you one to two minutes to tell a little bit about yourself, if you will.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Dave. Can anyone hear me? My name's Lauren Tomachoff. I'm a candidate in the Choya District. I have a background in banking. I've worked in banking for almost 15 years as a personal banking officer, where I had to make loan decisions on customers that came in and applied for loans. Since then, I've worked as a real estate professional. I've learned how to negotiate with people with different opinions, perspectives, and agendas. And just to tell you a little bit about why I'm here, about a year ago, I had a client who was looking for a home, and one of the first things he told me when we sat down was that he would not buy a home in Glendale. And I was a little bit startled that why would somebody, nobody's ever told me specifically they will not buy a home in a certain city. And he said, "Well, just for starters, $245 million that is going to the hockey team's not my problem if I don't live in Glendale." And I decided I needed to find out more about what was going on in the city that I work in, that I live in, that I care about. My family history goes back over 100 years in Glendale. And I started attending meetings, and the more I attended meetings, the more I realized what a dire situation Glendale was in. And I was raised to either step up or shut up, so I decided to step up and throw myself out there and try to make a difference in Glendale. Thank you.
My name is Gary Geerdorf. Here's what you need to know about me. I have four issues that now cause me to run for City Council in the Choya District of Glendale, Arizona. No more bad deals. I have a plan to bring back proper contract review and spending oversight to our city government using the life-blown skills I have developed in business. Stop the chaos. I've spent my entire professional life bringing order to chaos, assisting clients nationwide with viable solutions for their complex economic and business issues. I will do this for Glendale when I become your Councilman. Job growth and quality of life. In order to encourage job growth and enhance our quality of life, we must conduct the business of the city in an ethical and businesslike manner. Ethics is more than words on paper. It's a way of life, one that has guided me throughout my life, be it as United States Combat Marine in Vietnam, or for years of sitting across the table from ordinary people like you and me, who daily struggle with family issues of right and wrong, justice and injustice, and their responsibilities to their community as well as their loved ones. I want to be your Councilman because I see, like so many of you, City Council is disorganized. No more bad deals. An ethical behavior, and I want to replace it with fairness, honesty, and integrity. May God bless America, and God bless you. My name is Gary Geerdorf, and I want your vote.
Well, hello, and thank you to the Chamber of Commerce for hosting this event today. I think it's a terrific opportunity for candidates like myself and the others here to be able to meet with so many of your members and to express our, to you, our interest and our views on the issues, and to share with you our backgrounds as well. David, Michelle, and Jeff, I thank you for serving as moderators today. I know you're out there. I can vaguely see you. The lights are kind of bright, so, but I appreciate you doing this as well. So my name is Bart Turner, and I am a candidate for the Glendale City Council in the Beryl District. I'm a Glendale native. I went to Melvin E. Science School and Apollo High School. I studied business management and economics at Northern Arizona University. And about 10 years ago, I decided to further my education, so I applied to Harvard University. I got accepted, and I went back and lived in the Boston area of Cambridge for about a year and a half, and I earned a master's degree in public administration there. I think that that's some useful education that might be helpful in the city of Glendale in these particular times. I am semi-retired. I manage some family-owned rental properties in the West Valley, but it's not particularly time-consuming, so I have the time available to serve the citizens here in Glendale. I used to be the Executive Director of the Valley Citizens League, which is a regional civic organization that we worked at putting citizens together to study regional issues, come up with citizen-based solutions, and then I, as the Director, worked to get those solutions implemented through the City Councils and, thank you, City Councils and the County Board of Supervisors and the state legislature as well. So I have quite a bit of experience in this kind of work from both sides, and I'm anxious to hear your questions, moderators, today, and I'm also anxious to serve the city. Thank you so much.
My name is Randy Miller, and I'd like to welcome everyone from the Chamber here to this forum, and thank especially Dave and his crew for doing such a wonderful job for us, giving us a forum to participate in and to communicate our ideas and our positions. I would like to, I don't want to tell you about me all that much. I want to tell you why I'm here. And first is bad contracts, especially those that we rush through without citizen input. And I surely don't need to tell the group of people that are here that we've entered into quite a few contracts that are not of the best quality. Is that correct enough to say? We have contracts that require us to pay $9 a space for parking and charge 10. We have contracts that have no payment schedules. Number two is the waste of funds. I just can't believe that we looked into the eyes of a bunch of red-shirted children saying, "Please, please, give us back our DARE officer. Don't take our DARE program away." But we were capable of finding $100,000 to buy a voting software instead of raise our hand and say, "Aye." We told those kids they could have this, and how far would $100,000 go to have a DARE program? And most importantly, citizen input. If you attend the workshops of the City Council, you're not allowed to speak. If you go to the City Council meeting, you have five minutes to change someone's mind. Well, the council question has spent days, weeks even, studying this issue, and now you have five minutes to try and change their mind. I believe there should be a citizens forum where citizens can approach and can work with the council, not just one, but all at one time. From the time I've made it, I've announced my candidacy, I've made it a point to be at every single meeting, and I've made it a point to speak at every issue. The reason I do that is I believe that my statements are on the public record. There could be no doubt where I stand. If you vote for me, you already know how I feel, and I am asking for your vote this year. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Norma Alvarez, and I'm ready to put the office of the Council for the overview district. Before I begin, I'd like to thank the Chamber for providing some time so we can give you our ideas and for you to check us out as to what we really are. I made my career with the Community Action Program, first working as an employee with Maricopa County, and then as an employee with the city of Glendale. I worked a total of 35 years with the Community Action Program. That's a human services program, just like the city of Phoenix, but in Glendale, it was run by Maricopa County. I think my voting record explains what I'm about. I voted against the tax increase. I don't feel that increasing the tax will solve the problem, but put an additional burden to the taxpayers. I voted for the West Valley Resort and Casino. It's not about the gaming, the gambling. It's about jobs. The most important issue is that we need to renegotiate our contracts with the sports team, and private businesses also. We need to get back to work for the taxpayers and not the sports. And I voted for the Audit in Connection of Illegal Transfer Funds. Thank you.
Good morning, and thank you for being here. And I want to thank the Glendale Chamber of Commerce and other supporting organizations for hosting this event today. Thank you very much. My name is Jamie Aldama. I'm a candidate for Glendale City Council, Ocatillo District. Born and raised in Glendale for 46 years, and a resident of Glendale all my life and passionate of my community. I want to get something really clear this morning. I've been questioned many, many times in my residency, and I want to bring that out again openly today in front of everybody here in front of us today on our TV. I've been here for 46 years, born and raised, spent more than 35 years in the Ocatillo District. In 2011, the city of Glendale redistricted the Ocatillo District. Because I'm passionate about the issues and concerns in representing our district, my wife and I up and moved back into the district. I reside in Ocatillo District legally, and I live in Ocatillo District physically. I invite anybody in this room to my home at any time they choose. I currently serve as clerk for the Glendale Elementary Governing School Board, where I support our education for our children, and support our employees, and support education throughout our community. I serve as the Vice Chairman for the Planning and Commission for the city of Glendale, where I approve with a great commission land use for businesses coming to Glendale, and it's a pleasure to serve them and bring more business to Glendale, and served on many other boards and commissions for the city of Glendale. I look forward to serving you, the citizens of Ocatillo, and citizens of Glendale, providing support to businesses owners in Ocatillo and Glendale. My quest is to help reimage the city of Glendale. For many years, we've had a lot of bad things happen in Glendale, and we look really bad, and I want to help reimagine it, make it the Glendale that we want to live in, play in, and work in. And it is an absolute fabulous Glendale to live in, and I also support our employees at the city of Glendale. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. It's obvious that all of you care a great deal about Glendale. Thank you for your comments. I ask that each of you speak into the mics, if you would, for the audience, so that we can hear you very clearly. And you'll each have between one and two minutes to go ahead and answer a question. Michelle is here in the middle, as some of you have already seen, has a 30-second indicator for you. So she'll let you know promptly if you have about 30 seconds to go. And hopefully, everybody's ready? Round one? Here we go. Lauren, if you'd help us out here to start. How would you describe the culture of the top management with the city, and how do you intend to impact its effectiveness? Then, can it be changed by council? Let me go ahead and ask that again if I could. How would you describe the culture of the top management of the city, and how do you intend to impact its effectiveness, and can it be changed by council?
I believe that the management of the city actually has definitely improved over the last year with the city manager, the city attorney. I believe, I just believe firmly that people that want to work together can work together. The culture of distrust among people, no matter who you're working with, creates a bad working situation. I believe that open, honest discussions about issues are key to helping the city recover to get us where we need to go. Everything has to be out in the open. There's a lot of issues that we need to work together on. The city has made a lot of progress just in one year. The budget is in much better shape. We have a long way to go. But I believe within the council, within city management, that there has to be an open, honest conversation, and there has to be trust, I think, reestablished between the two working parties, so that there's a cohesive working relationship. I really think trust affects every relationship negatively, and I think that's really a big issue within the city at this point. I'm an open-book type of person. People who know me could tell you that I'm all about putting it all out there and letting people decide, and I believe that that is something that will really benefit the city. So, thank you.
Thank you. My question is for Bart Turner. Mr. Turner, both the economy and the city budget in Glendale have been devastated during the economic recession. Please provide us with two or three specific steps you would take to restart economic growth and balance the city budget.
Thank you, Michelle. Yes, you're absolutely right that the economic recession has had a lot to do with the downturn in the city budget, but it's also decisions that have been made by the City Council in the past as well that have put us in the situation we're in. So it's twofold. We need to, when opportunities arise, we might want to reevaluate some of the agreements that we're in and see if we can't negotiate them to be more advantageous to Glendale as it is today. And I'm glad to see that that has been happening. This isn't pie in the sky. It has been happening. We've renegotiated our arrangement with the city of Phoenix, as has recently been announced in the newspaper, and we are improving our situation a little bit down at Camelback Ranch, for instance. So I think those opportunities, we need to look for as well. I am not the least bit reluctant to say that I do support the half-cent sales tax, or not the half-cent, but the sales tax extension, the seven-tenths of a percent that the council recently passed. I look at it as comparable to, let's say, putting a tourniquet on a wound. Now, you need to be bleeding pretty badly to need a tourniquet, but I think that that's where the city of Glendale was, and that this is a tourniquet. But like a tourniquet, you're going to want to relieve it as quickly as possible, and as a council member, I would work with the others and also with members of the community, including the Chamber of Commerce, to establish some milestones, some benchmarks, at which we will be able to roll back that sales tax increase. I think this, our recent change in our rating on our bond issues, the improvement for the first time in many years, the improvement of our bond rating is a good sign. Those are the kind of benchmarks that I would look for, that we can set in the future. When we reach certain goals, we could be pulling back some of that, that sales tax increase. Thank you, Michelle.
My question is for Norma Alvarez, Councilmember Alvarez. What are your plans to stimulate economic vitality within the business community of Glendale?
One of the things that we haven't done in a long time is provide the services from the city to the business community in downtown Glendale. We need to do that. Those businesses have to survive, and we need to work together. One of the things that we need to do is to instruct our marketing department that they need to work with the business community and have activities that are going to bring money for them and for the city of Glendale. The sales tax is important, but if you don't have it, activities, then it's not going to work. So far, we have neglected the business community in downtown Glendale. I know that we take care of Westgate and sports, but we need to take care of the businesses in downtown. So my instruction would be to the Economic Development Group and also to the marketing department that they work very closely with the business community.
Gary, will the impact of special interests affect your individual leadership as a council member as much as it has the collective actions of the council as a whole?
Special interests have no place in our government. Good business sense is the thing that makes the most difference. There just is no place for special interests. I, and you, think of how, even allowed up to enter this non-partisan group, special interest has no place. We see that in the past, it apparently has happened. It's a divisive thing. Anytime you get special interests involved, then we have a problem. So I don't see that special interests has any position at all.
My question's for Randy Miller, Mr. Miller. What have you identified as issues for the business community in Glendale, and how would you approach these issues to bring about resolution?
I've identified a lot. Now, let's go to the downtown area first. Ocatillo has some of the most beautiful areas in the city as a whole, and some of the most wonderful historic areas, but the businesses down there continue to ask the City Council to have events and to help them out. One of my things is open your stores. Businesses not only have to have the support of the city, and they should. For example, right now, one of the businesses down there, the Two Share Foundation, is asking for permission to just put up a little flag that shows they're there, because they're back in the Caitlin Court area, which most people don't see. They're not allowed to right now. The city will not allow them to put up a small flag that says, "Hey, we're open," something to attract attention to get them back there. So let's loosen up some of our restrictions. I've heard from several developers now that have approached me and said, "Hey, I've tried to build in Glendale, and it is so very hard for us to get anything pushed through." We can go to Peoria, we can go to Phoenix, and we can have a project approved quickly. So one of our things needs to be to streamline the process, or if we're so ingrained where we're at that we can't streamline it, maybe we need to have someone that will walk a new business through the procedure and get all of the things done at once. We can't continue to make businesses wait an extra six, eight, 10, 12 months before they can come to the city of Glendale. So that position has to be streamlined. That's what we can do to help businesses.
This question is for Jamie Aldama. Mr. Aldama, the City Council recently approved the spending of $96,514 over four years on voting machines to be used by the seven members of the City Council once a month at council meetings. The contract is front-loaded with $43,000 of it coming in the first year. It may also require, may or may not, require an additional staff member at meetings to help with the machines. My question to you is, if you were on the City Council when that vote was taken... My question to you is, if you were on the city council when that vote was taken, would you have, would you have supported that expenditure? And tell us why, or why not, please?
Mr. Blake, thank you very much for that question. I indeed was in the, in the audience during that vote. First and foremost, I'll say that the city of Glendale, any organization here will agree with me that we have to embrace technology as technology becomes available to us. That system is, will provide some technology advantages to, to the council at some point in time. Specifically, the dollar amount, if I was on that council, I would not have voted at that time for it. I don't feel $96,000 was available. And I say that strongly because I don't have a prevy to where the money is going to come from exactly. So I would have voted no, simply because at this time, I don't believe that we have the availability to post an additional employee in that position where we can maybe perhaps place that employee in a different, more important department of the city. At a certain time or a later date, I feel that system is going to work extremely well for the city. And again, we have to embrace technology as it becomes available, and that is one that I will embrace at this time with our fiscal budget deficit that we have. I'm happy that it went from 17 million to 2.3 million, I believe. But we still have a deficit, and that was one that would help cut that and reduce that. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. That completes round one. We have three rounds total. And in this next round, each candidate will get a different question, once again, with a one- to two-minute response. My first question's for Bart Turner. How many people, for many people, the city of Glendale has negotiated unfavorable deals over the past 10 years that have required taxpayers to subsidize or pay more taxes. What steps should the city of Glendale take to ensure that future negotiations are more favorable to the city and its taxpayers?
Thank you, Dave. I think crucial in this, in this work is, one, transparency. I think that having the time for the public to analyze, knowing that the public will have time to analyze the transactions will perhaps improve the quality of it, being transparent with the public about the details of them and the motivations behind them. But also, I think that there are times in which you need to bring forward people with particular expertise. Some of these transactions, whether they've been with, whether it's been with the sporting enterprises, or whether it's been with the tribal gaming enterprise, there's some highly technical and unique work in that field that isn't something that the general city council staff is going to have. And I think that we could well have in the past done better by bringing in some specific expertise, and I would like to see us do that more in the future. I'm not a big one for spending a lot of money on consultants or running a, running a consulting operation at taxpayers' expense, but when you need expert advice, you need to go get it. And there's, it's out there. There's national organizations that have dealt with, for instance, Indian Gaming across the country and have dealt with contracts with sporting events and all of that. I do think there are some areas in which the city has done particularly well. Economic development of late has been one of those. The economic downturn has certainly hurt us, but we are, we are doing quite well now. I'm excited that with the American Family, American Furniture Warehouse project, that that went from, from an idea, you know, a purchase of land, to a grand opening in less than six months. That tells me that our economic development and our building departments are working really quite well. And we also have Tanger expanding, and we have the Espera program as well up in the north side. And so we're, things are going right in Glendale in that area right now. Thank you.
My next question is for Councilmember Norma Alvarez. Councilmember, what do you see as Glendale's regional role as the largest city in the West Valley?
I think the role of the city should be what we had before. We're an example city. There was more transparency. I think we need to let the west side areas know that we are leaders, and, but we have to have that by being transparent. Honesty for the taxpayers. We don't have that. We don't share too much information. I wish I could sit here and agree on how good it is at this time, but it isn't. It still isn't. And it's up to the taxpayers to make us accountable. So our role, not only to the other cities and to the taxpayer, is to be honest and face, face and accept that we have a problem. Some other councilmen's members did mistakes, but those will not be discussed or will not be taken care of. So we're going to stay the same, and that's not what we need to do. We need to be an example and admit our mistakes. That's the role that the outside communities want to see. Thank you.
This question is for Gary Dierdorf, Mr. Dierdorf. What do you think that Glendale should be doing differently, if anything, to portray a positive image as a community to the rest of the region in order to attract more residential move-ins and more business relocations to Glendale?
Well, you surely cannot expect me to sit when I talk about something that's so exciting. Glendale is on the move. Our city manager and staff have done an incredible job. They stopped the free flow, but it cost 25% of our staff. We, we, you and I, have got to get up and say, yeah, Glendale, we are on demand. We're a great city. We didn't change. That's what got me excited, quality of life. I don't fear getting out and running at 5:00 in the morning when it's dark before anybody's up because we've got great public service. I know that if something goes wrong, an officer is not far away. Or if I went down with a heart attack or something, hopefully I would be able to call 911, there'd be somebody to answer the, answer the phone. It's not, we just don't have that problem. I'm so excited about Glendale. You need to be excited about Glendale. I probably said that.
My next question is to Randy Miller. Randy, in your opinion, what is the top issue in Glendale? If elected, how would you approach this issue?
David, it's not often somebody throws you a softball like that, so thank you very much. The top issue in Glendale is easy. It's our budget. It's our budget, and it's our debt. If we can't climb out of this debt hole, we're never going to fix things. Do we need more public safety officers? Yes, we're down 30. How are we going to get them? What does it take to get another officer on the force? And how do you get that? You fix the problems we have currently. You stop reckless spending. You stop wasteful spending. You make sure that every dime that the council votes on is for the benefit of the citizens, not for the convenience of the council. And you go out there and do this job. We're going to have to face up to the fact that really, every single one of us, over the next four years, I don't believe anybody's got an easy choice or an easy decision to make. This is not one of those, we have a ton of money, let's go get a sports team kind of years. This is, we're broke, let's see how tight we can pull the belt loops up. So what would I do? I would focus on, if we can renegotiate the contracts, let's do it. If we can form better contracts in the future, let's do it. And if we can take that new section of land, we've got the 303 Northern Parkway Loop, and if the Planning Commission does their job correctly, the city staff does their job correctly, and council does their job correctly, that can become a large income-producing area for Glendale. And with that area, we'll be able to grow, bring in the income, lower the tax rate because we'll have a wider tax base, and Glendale will be able to get out of this hole and become the great city that we all know it is. Thank you.
My next question is for Jamie Aldama. Mr. Aldama, how do you think what happens in Glendale affects the West Valley or greater Phoenix as a larger region?
Yes, thank you very much. What we do in Glendale has a lot on our image of Glendale. As I said in my opening, I want to help reimage Glendale. It is absolutely the best place that anyone can live in. I'm sorry to my, to our neighbors, but Glendale is the best place to live. What we do, the decisions we make in Glendale reverberate in the entire West Valley and in Phoenix and in the North Valley. We are, we are a champion city. We do have stadiums here that are regionally known and nationally wide-known, and I'll continue to support that. Anything good we do is a reimage to the city of Glendale. It has an effect on us, and it has an effect on our economic development, has an effect on our housing, how many people want to come to the city of Glendale, is why I support our, our employees in more marketing, bringing more economic development, and bringing more business to Glendale, is why I serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission. It's a great privilege to do so. But the lack of homes or homeowners and the lack of economic development will have its results on Glendale, is why I will do everything in my legal power to make sure that we reimage Glendale and make it that wonderful, best place it is today. Thank you.
This question is for Lauren Tomachoff. Ms. Tomachoff, if, if you have talked with small business owners and operators in your district about the impact of the retention of the sales tax increase, have they told you what impact it's had on their sales? If you would share that with us. And then, tell us what types of businesses you talked with and a little bit about what they said.
I have talked to some small businesses, some of them owned by friends of mine, acquaintances, others. They, some, depending on the type of business, especially the small bomb and pop-type businesses, have noticed a little bit of a drop-off in business. A couple of restaurants, a hardware store, places where they feel, especially with the hardware store, it's a little bit hard to say because those types of businesses are having a hard time competing with the big-box stores, so it's hard to tell exactly why that is. But I have talked to a lot of citizens who specifically shop someplace else than Glendale. I've talked to many more people who may, that, you know, that'll go to a different Costco rather than to go to the Costco in Glendale because, and it's, it's not a lot of money, it's, it's the principle. And a lot of people that I've spoken to, even businesses, it's not even just the drop-off in business and the difference in sales tax, it's we're competing with Peoria at 1.6. We're competing with Peoria with also business owners, especially business property owners, at a much higher property tax rate than Peoria, which much of the district is right across the street. It's, it's a competitive world out there, and I, I know taxes are important. I'm happy that the temporary sales tax lift has improved our rating, Moody's, it was, it's good news. But we're not going to be able to tax our way out of this. We've got to grow revenue. We've got to work on our reputation. We've got to get out there and promote Glendale. We've got to get more businesses. We need revenue to get our way, work our way out of this. We're not going to be able to do it just by raising taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. That completes round two. Round three, the same rules apply. Each candidate will get a different question with a one-to-two-minute response. My first question is to Norma Alvarez. Norma, do you think that Glendale should be doing anything differently to portray a positive image as a community to the rest of the region?
You know, this sounds like when I go to session with city council. I hate to be negative. I am from Glendale. I've lived here all my life. But it's different, and I understand, Mr. Dierdorf, everything is very handy. It depends on the area that you live. It's going to change when we, as a city, realize that it's not the same services. They're different. And until you accept that, people are going to move out. We have no recreation. We do have it in the north, but we don't have it in the south. We need to see the city of Glendale as a whole. We need to see that people are leaving us, employees, because they're not happy. We need to see that our libraries are not working at full capacity because of lack of staff. We need to see that our police department and our fire department are lacking personnel. So, I don't know, this is all I can tell you. When we treat Glendale as the same, it's not going to be fixed. So, you know, I, I don't want to disappoint you. I'm not against. I love Glendale. That's why I'm here. But I love both Glendals, the north and the south. So we need, we need to get going and help Glendale, not just part of Glendale. Thank you.
My next question is for Gary Dierdorf, Mr. Dierdorf. What qualifications do you bring to the voters of your district as a candidate for Glendale City Council? And why do you want to be on the city council for your district?
Qualifications? I'm sorry.
What qualifications? Would you like me to repeat that?
Yes.
Okay, sure. What qualifications do you bring to the voters of your district as a candidate for the Glendale City Council? And why do you want to be a council member?
You keep asking me all these questions, and I've got to sit down and answer. I mean, I'm excited about this. This is incredible. I have been in the financial services industry for over 40 years. I'm eminently qualified. I manage approximately $65 million of people's money. People depend on me for that monthly check. I can't say, oh, gee whiz, something happened in the market, and you're not going to get your check this month. Or, oh, well, it's gone. That can't happen. I am responsible. I know what integrity is. That's what I said in my opening remarks. Honesty. I have no option. I have the highest ethics. I'm required to take over 60 hours of continuing education every year in fields that I am licensed in. That's so that people know that I am qualified. It's not what I say. I have to prove it. I have ethics requirements in every one of those different disciplines because the ethics are different depending on what you're talking about. An ethical person is an ethical person, but an ethical person dealing with finance or with taxes or with, as an accredited investment fiduciary. I know what it's like to have to get inside of you to determine what your needs are and set mine away. I can't do that. It's not an option. I have to, as that, become you. Along that same line, I had the opportunity to visit with FIRE. And I was amazed as I got involved with the understanding of the things that they have to put up with because I'd never put myself in the position. And one of the things that they told me was, lack of respect out there, not just for the firefighter, but we as a public take public service and say, oh, if there's a budget problem, then we need to cut there. We should not do that. Shame on us. We need to let them know that we appreciate their service. You're going to tell me I'm done, right? I'm not done, but I'll quit, okay? Thank you.
This question is for Randy Miller. Mr. Miller, does an organization outside of the city government and the city council, specifically such as the Glendale Chamber, have a right to speak publicly in opposition to... to a decision that the City Council may take? And also not have to expect any kind of personal or professional reprisals? Or, if taking a position opposed to council, should it just be expected that any reprisal is politics as usual?
I hope I have all of that. Let me tell you, I'm somewhat aware of where this question came from, and I just want to throw this out there, Robert. This is not me just saying something nice to you, but the truth is, look around you and tell me that two years ago, this Glendale Chamber would have filled this beautiful ballroom. There's just no way it would have happened. We'd have been in the back of the Glen Pines course with four small tables, and the candidates might have actually outnumbered the attendees. So, one of the things I was going to mention earlier, and the two-minute time limit didn't let me, was we should embrace Robert's leadership of the chamber. We should embrace the chamber. And in answer to your question, the simple answer is yes. Yes, you should be able to state your opinion. If I could check real quick, Robert, I believe you're an American citizen who votes here?
Yes.
Okay. Any citizen that votes should be allowed to stand up, raise his hand, and say, "I don't like that." For those of you that have watched the City Council meetings, you've seen me stand up and applaud and say, "That was great." And you've seen me stand up and say, "I don't like that." And I have every right to do that, and so does anyone here. And there should be no reprisals. There is no reason. We, as a council, are not your bosses. We are not a body that was put over you. We're a body that was put there by you to represent you. And if you disagree with something that we say as a council, you should feel very free not only to step up and tell, myself as your individual councilperson, but you should feel safe to step in front of the entire council, say exactly what you feel, and fear absolutely no reprisals. The very last time I checked, this country was America. It runs on a democracy. It is not somewhere else where we run on communism. Thank you.
My next question is Jamie Aldama. Jamie, is the management style of city staff leadership open and transparent? And what will you do to ensure it remains open and transparent?
Thank you for the question, Mr. McJure. I believe the city management team we have onboard now is doing some great things. We're moving forward, not moving backwards with the seven tent sales tax. The result of that was that our Moody investment rating has gone up, meaning we've gone forward, not backwards. I believe that the city management team right now is having the doors much more wide open than they were previously. Specifically, what I will do is I will communicate to the city manager and hold her and expect for her to hold her team accountable and expect that transparency that we need, that we didn't have in the past. When we lack transparency, we lack trust, and we lack residents coming out for the city and making it a better place. I will work diligently, and I will work collectively and collaboratively with our mayor, with our council members, to ensure that we hold our city manager accountable. Nobody is absolutely perfect, but I'm comfortable in the direction we're going right now. But there's always room for improvement, and I will ensure that that transparency continues and that our citizens have trust in our council members and in the results of our votes. And so I'm looking forward to serving our community and bringing that more transparency. Thank you.
My next question is for Lauren Tomachoff. Ms. Tomachoff, when an issue is presented to you as a member of council, what steps will you take before stating your position and ultimately voting on that issue?
The first thing I would do is make sure I, you know, I understand the issue, read what's presented to me, and then reach out, make sure I have all the facts. I think that is one thing that has been lacking. There's been a lot of things that have happened where, even after council meetings relatively recently, where I had questions about something that was voted on, and there weren't a lot of answers. In particular, the parcel that was given, the fountain parcel over there, right across the street here, nobody seemed to be sure exactly what the size of the parcel was. I know it wasn't huge, but still, I mean, what's the value? You have to know how big it is to understand the value. I believe in having an open door and an open mind, you know, to have people feel comfortable to come in and present their side of an issue, to listen to them, to have respect for their opinion. And many, many times, the answer to a question is maybe somewhere in the middle of what two people think. I think that's how business works. I think that's how government works. That's how really any relationship, and this really all comes down to relationships. The relationship of the council among each other, the relationship of the council among the city management, the relationship council has with the citizens, the staff of their district and Glendale throughout, that you have to have an open mind and make sure you understand the issues and listen to people, and then you have to make a decision. I understand as a councilperson, you're going to be on the wrong side of every issue for somebody, but you have to make the best decision you can. Thank you.
And this question is for Bart Turner. Mr. Turner, what types of businesses would you like to attract to Glendale? And tell us a little bit about why, if there are specific businesses you would like to attract.
Thank you, Jeff. I think that, to some degree, it's a matter of us going out and looking for businesses to attract. But I also think that it's, as much as anything, it's us being a business-friendly environment for any business that wants to come to our area. And I think that the city staff is definitely working in that direction. I think we've seen a wide variety of things lately, from major retail and warehouse to mixed-use development. We're going to see a lot more opportunities in the 303 that comes along. We've got to have a place for anybody, from the mom and pops that want to come, whether they want to locate in downtown Glendale or in the suburbs or up north or out west, to the biggest of the bunch. And yes, it does even include some big box stores and those sorts of things. But we have to understand that the economic engine in America, and therefore in our community, is going to be that middle ground, that small business of, that typically runs from 10 to 100 employees, and there's just a huge variety of them. I'm not going to put my finger on any particular thing that I think is missing, which maybe you were hoping for, but it's about us keeping a business-friendly environment for all businesses and being able to work with all the comers. And it's also about us having a business-friendly environment for the businesses that are already here. Promoting our downtown dining district in Glendale is something that needs to be done. You can dine around the world in a four-block radius in downtown Glendale. You know, everywhere from Saigon, Little Saigon, to the German restaurants, to two of the best Italian restaurants in town, to two very fine Mexican restaurants, and more and more and more. But, you know, looking at what we've already got and promoting that is helpful, too. And taking some of the burden off of our existing businesses where they feel a burden could be quite helpful as well. So let's be business-friendly for all. Thanks.
This completes round three. At this time, let everyone have one to two minutes, if you would, to kind of wrap it up. And Jamie, since we started with Lauren to begin with, why don't we start with you and work from right to left this time?
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for providing us all the opportunity to share our ideas and vision and goals for Glendale in the future. Every one of us up here sharing our goals for Glendale. In my race, there are stark differences in my opponent and I in the way we will represent the Alcatel district and the city as a whole. I'm comfortable gathering in small and large groups, constituents, outside experts, business owners and operators, or any stakeholder, and addressing issues head-on. I'm not too proud to say I don't have the answers to every question challenges facing city of Glendale or the Alcatel district. I'm not. We need help, and I'll search for that help. By bringing together those who have more knowledge than me or staff or different ideas on how to address those concerns, I believe we will have a better Glendale. Let me make something perfectly clear to everybody in the room. I have never gotten up in the morning and wished Glendale would fail. Never. Rather, I wake up in the morning, try to find ways to resolve the issues of Glendale, make it a better place, like I said, to live, work, and play. It is the best place to live. Glendale is the best place. With your help and support together, we'll see Glendale become the shining jewel of the West Valley. Secondly, while serving in office, I'll never be ashamed to serve on office, never ashamed to serve on our council, regardless of the votes, regardless of what happens. If we vote on something or the lack of that vote, we need to stand by that vote. I thank you so much for allowing me to be part of this great event. I appreciate the Glendale Chamber for what you do for our businesses, our local businesses in Alcatel district and Glendale as a whole. I appreciate all of the voters who are here today and the business owners here today. I thank you very much, and I ask for your vote on November 4th. Thank you very much.
I don't think that there's any difference. I, as far as neighborhoods or getting with my constituents, I have learned through the community action program to meet the neighborhoods and have neighborhood district leaders. I believe that we need to communicate with the tax payer and any resident that, even people living in housing and they can be, you know, care centers. We need to communicate to the public, and I do that very well. I also, I'm not a good public speaker, but I adore. I have done a lot in Glendale. Youth programs, getting centers for the kids and for the elderly. I've advocated for the public to get involved. I've done many things, not just for the low-income, the middle-income. I'm actively, have been very active with the schools. My problem is, I'm not going to agree to something that's wrong, and I'm going to bring it to your attention. Now, if you want to hear that everything is peachy, I'm not the person. I research, and I know it's not. I've driven Glendale all my life. You know where it is. I've never moved. I've done it. I'm not here to start. I have done and I have to. Thank you.
I feel almost like the adopted child up here, but when you're adopted, they say that your parents didn't just have you, they chose you. Well, I wasn't born in Glendale. I wasn't raised in Glendale. But I chose Glendale 14 years ago, and I chose it because I thought it was the best city in the world. I had options in Scottsdale and Phoenix, and my Realtor showed me everything on the east side of town and told me how much better it would be to move over there. And I just fell in love with Glendale. I had friends that lived here, and I wanted to be here. I wanted to be close to them. I think the only regret I have about moving to Glendale is I waited too long, and Ming's Farm, which was right in my area, closed down and moved out just as I moved in, so I wasn't able to go over there and get all that great food. But what am I going to do for Glendale? What am I bringing to you? I'm bringing you 20 years of leadership experience from my Marine Corps career. I think that everybody, including this one, needs leaders and it needs followers, and I've been in the position to be both. And if there's an issue I'm passionate about, I'll lead. And if there's an issue you're passionate about, and you convince me that it's good for Glendale, then I'll follow. I can work both sides of that table. The one thing that I'm pushing from here on out, and the one thing that I will push for the next four years, if it's not good for Glendale, then it's just not good. We have got to quit making mistakes. We've got to quit throwing our money away. We've got to quit signing bad contracts, and we have got to say, "It's good for Glendale or it's out of here." Thank you.
Thank you again to the chamber and for all of you who have attended today. I think you've been presented with a very good candidates forum, and I think you can make your decisions from here. I'd like to let you know and remind you that I've, well, for one, we all agree that Glendale is a place that people come to live because of the quality of life that we have here. I've been a leader in Glendale and Glendale organizations for over 40 years. I'm a past president of the Historical Society. I'm currently president of the Arts Council. I'm a past president of the West Valley Child Crisis Center. I've served as chairman of the Parks and Recreation Commission. All of these things over time as a means of community service, giving back to my community to build and to maintain the quality of life we've had. Now, it's slid a little bit perhaps in the last few years. Parks aren't as well-maintained. Recreation programs aren't as plentiful. But my commitment is that the quality of life will continue, will come back as being the number-one thing for Glendale to be known as. To change our reputation, to change our image, we have to change our reality. And that means addressing things like our quality of life, addressing things like our long-range financial situation, addressing things like our crazy reputation for being the worst in the valley, for providing information to voters or to the general public and to the press and that sort of thing. One of the things we need to do is track our Freedom of Information Act request and see, are they getting resolved and how are they getting resolved? How long is it taking? To be, to have a reputation as being one of the most difficult city governments for the public and the press to work with is not something that we should settle for, and certainly isn't anything to be proud of. The opportunities in Glendale are great, and we have a great history. We're going through some rough spots. We have a great future. And the way it's going to really perform is to have the kinds of interaction that the question earlier was about, the role of the Chamber of Commerce, for instance, and can it serve as both a supportive role and also as adversarial? It certainly should be. And there should never be any political reprisals or any intimidating bullying for the Chamber of Commerce or for the Historical Society or for the Rotary Club or any other organization. But these are important parts of our community that have contributed to us for years and years, and they need to be respected. And through that, we'll have a great future. And I invite you to go to my website, bartknowsglendale.com. My positions are in writing on the website, also on the table and out on the table outside. I see the bell. Thank you, Michelle, and thank you for all of you being here today.
I'm reminded that I'm here to serve you, not me. I need to have communications with constituents and then give that information to the rest of the City Council and act on that. We Marines are just saying, always faithful, not sometimes faithful, not when it's convenient, always faithful. I want to be your councilman because, as I said before, and so many of you see, City Council is disorganized. No more bad deals. An ethical behavior, and I want to replace it with fairness, honesty, and integrity. May God bless America and God bless you. My name is Gary Deardorff, and I want your vote.
My family history, as I said in the beginning, goes back over 100 years in Glendale. The first Tomachoffs came here in 1911, and they were hard-working farmers, and many of them start still farming right down the street where you can still get vegetables, Randy, fresh-farmed vegetables, right down the street. But I, you know, I was raised to work hard. I was raised to tell the truth. I'm an open book. I'm a person that is honest, sometimes possibly to a fault, but you can count on me to tell you the truth. I have a lot of integrity. I have the banking experience that where I had to make actual loan decisions, and if the decision was over my authority, that I had to submit a loan proposal to be sent down to the executives down at the corporate office and with a recommendation why or why not the loan made sense. In real estate, I've stepped away from many deals where I felt that it was a little too close to the edge for my level of comfort. I'm an ethical person. I've never been sued except by my opponent. I've never, never had any, never, it's the truth, Gary. Anyway, excuse me, it's my turn. Anyway, I've never been, never been to court, never been sued, and I will tell the truth. I will have an open door and an open mind, and I'm asking for your vote on November 4th. Thank you.
We want to thank our candidates, but before I do...
We want to thank our candidates, but before I do, it never seems to fail, you always forget someone in a room that should be acknowledged, so thank you, Bobby, for having my back as our incoming chair. Another one of our past chairs that is here is Tom McCarthy from 1980, so thank you very much for being here. And I'm sorry I missed you. You know, we've certainly heard some great information today throughout the campaign cycle, and I'm sure there's going to be more information that we hear up until Election Day. One of the biggest things that you can do, aside from exercise your right to vote, is really get out there and advocate for those that live in your community, those that work for your companies, those that are a part of our community here in Glendale, and encourage them to vote. Voting is so extremely important to our community. You know, at the Glendale Chamber, I make sure that we provide time away from work for our team to go out and vote, and I would encourage you to do the same for your company. We're trying to lead by example to get out there, because again, we have to work as a collective whole, a collective body, to bringing Glendale back to what it can be. So thank you. Again, I do want to thank all of our candidates for being here. It's not easy to coordinate calendars, so thank you all very much. Our moderators, Jeff, Michelle, and Dave, thank you. And with that, we want to thank all of you for being here, and have a wonderful day.